We are going to call our meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to awards and recognitions.
Yes, first off, we wanted to share with you, all of our schools do a really wonderful job of celebrating our veterans, and they had various presentations and work in the classrooms recently, but we did have a little video we wanted to share that shows our early childhood students with their veterans they salute. So we got a little video to share. Are you starting that from back there, Tony? Or we gotta do it up here? Thank you, Kay.
Very good.
Looks like we're gonna need some additional money for glue. But they also did a really great job of also talking to the kids about what it means to be a veteran and to serve your country, so it wasn't just the arts and craft was the fun stuff, but they also had a cool educational component to it. And then the other recognition we have tonight is for our new board members. Keith Slusser, I understand, is out of town, but we wanted to recognize. So becoming a board member also comes with a lot of responsibilities, including training from the Missouri School Board Association, so we'd like to congratulate Ryan Flynn on completing his training. Thank you, Ryan.
Great, so that brings us to communications and citizens comments. Do we have any citizens comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Roll Call, please, Kate.
Jamie Allen.
Here.
Brian Flynn.
Here.
Chris Perkins. Keith Ravenberg.
Here.
Keith Slusser. Lindsay Spencer.
Here.
Carrie Trussell.
Here.
I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as I would.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that goes to superintendent's report.
Right, tonight we're going to hear from our, two out of our four strategic plan committees. First up tonight, we have Kristen Clemmons and Tony Dobson with our, they are the champions of our Community Engagement Committee to report on their work and progress.
That was a great video. Thank you. It's a difficult topic to teach preschoolers, so we took it at their level, but our preschoolers had a really fun discussion, like went everywhere from my mom, went to the beach, back to veterans, to I've been to the beach. All right, well, thank you for the opportunity to share the work that our Community Engagement Committee has been doing. We have been meeting now, we've met three sessions, and we just have a brief update on the work that we've done so far.
So we started with our committee, you know, we needed a direction, we needed a guide, we needed a roadmap, so our committee purpose is up on the screen there. The Community Engagement Committee will gather feedback to plan meaningful events that reflect the interests of the greater Brentwood community. Committee members will seek creative ways to engage the community in two-way communication about district programs, events, news, and updates. A major focus of this committee will be to build strong connections and foster positive relationships with our historically marginalized population. And this was something we, you know, coming out of COVID, you know, two years of kind of being isolated and being closed off from everyone, this means a great deal to get back into engagement and to connect with each other again, no matter how we do it, you know, finding those ways to make those connections and to get back to, quote unquote, the new normal.
So that purpose then was tasked to our committee, and what you noticed is it said "community" in there, so we wanted to define what community was and who exactly we're trying to engage here. So when we really broke it down as a group, we decided that it was families, staff, and local stakeholders, businesses, neighbors, folks like that, but really centering around the students and always keeping them at the forefront of our thinking and our decision-making as a committee.
So when we got started, we needed, like we said, we needed a roadmap, we needed a guide to guide our work and our process, so we started working inside out with our three strategies that we want to target, and then developing potential action steps, and then developing both school and district action plans. Now, this is a two-year strategic plan, so, you know, the things that we're talking about, we're setting the groundwork, the foundation for, you know, working on engagement, being able to track engagement, how we, you know, how we gauge our people, our people engaged, our people interacting with one another. So our first meeting, we started talking about our strategies, so what are the three big buckets that we want to focus on?
Right. So we'll talk about each of the strategies and then the potential action steps that we listed out as a group, and then as the folks are going back to their individual buildings, they may use a lot of those potential action steps, but they may also come up with others of their own. So our first strategy is we had to realize and figure out what methods we needed to identify community members that had low engagement, so in other words, who's not engaging? And we had to figure out how to find the folks that are not engaging, be it students, parents, community members, staff, anybody who's not engaging strongly. So that was the first thing, was figuring out how to figure, find that set of folks. So our potential action steps were to poll high school students and ask about parent and caregiver engagement, track attendance for events, have discussions at grade-level PLCs and bi-monthly meetings, and that's more like a staff discussion, like, hey, have you noticed, or what are you seeing as a trend here? Collect and review parent-square mass notifications data, see who does and doesn't report student absences as far as parents or families, like who's not calling in and maybe struggling with that step of the process and why. Focusing on building those relationships with each and every student so that we know which students are engaged, looking at who doesn't return forms. It's as simple as, you know, we've sent home this form now three times, it's not coming back with what's going on. Looking at a mechanism for times when low engagement is noticed, and then seeing who and who doesn't refill food service accounts, which, you know, it seems erroneous, but if you match that with a couple of other things, you may get a trend and then find somebody that you need to make that connection with.
And what we're trying to do is to, you know, some of the, some of the action steps are anecdotal, you know, have you noticed that someone didn't come to parent-teacher conferences, or have you noticed, and then, so we're trying to mesh that with actual hard data that we can pull, so we can poll parent-square data, we can poll, you know, who's not returning forms and who is returning, or who is refilling lunch balances and things like that, so we can have a balance of both, because you want to be able to have hard data so you can track it, but those anecdotal efforts help as well. So our second strategy that we came up with, the Brentwood School District will determine the barriers to engagement among the identified community members and develop strategies to remove those barriers to engagement. So when we talked about this in our group during our second meeting, you know, it was just a brainstorm. What kind of barriers are out there for people that are struggling with engagement, who aren't as engaged as they could be? So, you know, just some of the things that we think about in our daily lives, lack of time, we're too busy to come to parent-teacher conferences to do those things, you know, is it a cost barrier? You know, distrust in educational institutions that exist, that's a thing. You know, language barriers, are we, when we're communicating, are we communicating in someone's preferred language so they know what's going on, so they can have the exact same experience that, you know, everyone else is getting? Same thing with technology barriers, we saw that a lot during COVID, you know, we adjusted and we did virtual things, and we did virtual parent-teacher conferences, and keeping some of those kinds of things, but do people struggle with technology? You know, a virtual conference is more convenient, but if I'm not well-versed in Zoom or Google Meet, you know, that doesn't really help me. You know, location transportation barriers, can I get up here at night for parent-teacher conferences? Things like that. Family structure and childcare, same thing, if, you know, if I want to come to a PTO meeting, but I've got, it's 5:30, 6 o'clock, and I've got a five-year-old and a three-year-old, I'd love to come to the meeting, but what am I gonna do with these two? I know you don't want, you don't want them running around during the meeting. And same thing with, you know, is there a criminal history, is there a reason that I can't necessarily come into the building, but I still want to be engaged, maybe virtually if I can? And then lack of district awareness. So some of those things, we've, we've decided, you know, what are ways that we can attack and address and action steps to those potential barriers? You know, and like we said, we've already done that, we've established alternative technology opportunities, so we're doing virtual conferences, we're streaming activities and events in our gym and on our field, our stadium field at the high school, so some of those type of things, but what else can we do, or can we fine-tune those things to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck and we're getting the most engagement out of it? You know, exploring transportation options, is there a way we can do a cab or a bus or something like that to get people here that struggle with transportation? You know, offering different methods in different times, we talked about the in-person and the virtual, but, you know, can I do a morning parent-teacher conference instead of an afternoon, because I work a second or third shift? Creating, and this was one kind of at the district level, creating community engagement opportunities. So one of the examples that came up was, I guess the mayor in Brentwood does donuts with the mayor, so can we do donuts with the superintendent, or can we invite our senior citizens in and have a, you know, have a kind of a state of the district and let them know what's happening in their schools because, just because they don't have a student, you know, in our schools, we still want them connected and we still want their support. Same thing with, you know, let's give them free passes to things if we can, let's invite them to, you know, the fall play, if it's a dress rehearsal and it can be free, let's invite them to have an active presence in the community. So we talked about being connected with the community, but, you know, can we go to board volunteering meetings, can we go to award meetings, can we go to Kiwanis and Rotary and all those things to just have an active presence there, and if an opportunity is there to engage with those folks in the room, or just three minutes to share some good information, some good news about what's happening in our schools, can we do that? Same thing with events, you know, the Brentwood days, we march in the parade, but are there more things that we could do with that? You know, this was a great one, we get tons of copies of the Pulse newspaper, you know, why can't we send a copy home with all of our pit kids? Just so they know what's kind of happening in, they know what's happening in our level, but what's happening in the Brentwood community? And then having those personal relationships and those follow-up communications, so, you know, if somebody is struggling, I have a direct relationship with you and I can reach out instead of just a, you know, a mass email or a mass invite, it's a one-on-one connection that makes me feel that like you want me there and I want to be there because of that.
So we've established who's not engaging, and then we've established possibly why, and then what we could do about it. And when we talked as a committee, we really thought that it's great to have a goal, but if it's not a goal that's actionable, that doesn't result in something and have an outcome, you're just sitting there spinning your wheels. So we really did take this committee that direction to get actionable change and to really have an effect with this goal. So the third step is to hold ourselves accountable for that, because if you're not accountable, then it just kind of sometimes may fall by the wayside. So we want to create an accountability system and framework for every building and department based on measurable engagement opportunities for our targeted community members, and the targeted community members are those that are not engaging. So, and it's really everybody, but those that are not engaging are our targets. So our strategies for that are to establish a check-in systems for teacher and staff to track and engage parents and caregivers that have low engagement, review mid-year data and reach out to individuals with personal phone calls and communications, invitations, gestures, sit next to them at a game, if they show up and say, hey, we'd love to see you at parent-teacher conferences, you know, we're really excited to talk to you about what's going on. And follow-up on the data collected from action step number one. So it's circular, so we're accountable, we're checking in, do we need to do another round of identification, and then go through the same steps again? And so with this being a two-year goal, we've gotten so far as to identify these strategies and possible action steps, and so our next steps are going to be...
Yeah, at our, at our most recent meeting, we talked about, you know, when we talked about what is community at the center of that, at the center of everything we do is students, we're student-centered, we're student-focused, so what are our opportunities that we're giving our students to engage? You know, they're here between eight and three, but what about after that or before that? You know, what kind of opportunities do we have for students to find their passion, to explore something that they don't normally get during the school day, or to try something, if they don't like it, they can try something else to find, you know, to find their, find their path and find their people to, you know, to be engaged in? And those are just some examples of this.
So we have a variety of opportunities that we wanted to highlight within the district, so folks do know what's available to engage in. At the early childhood level, we've got a lot going on every day, we have, of course, home visits through parents and teachers, we're back in the Ecology Center on Litzinger, we are, we did trick-or-treat over at the Lutheran Senior Services and had a great time just going through their cubicles and offices, and they were so welcoming of us, we were so glad, apparently that's historic, but it was a first for me, and it was super exciting to see how happy they were, there was dry ice, it was, it was fantastic. Looking at the kindergarten transition days, all of our PAT group connections, there are six or seven, sometimes eight per semester where families can come out, we've had behavior, we've had one-one sleep, we've done a fall fest, we've done our play at the parks, so a lot going on through our PAT group connections. And then there's our end-of-the-year bash with our newly-formed PTO that ratified its bylaws and elected its members to the executive board, the OPTO. And then our outdoor learning adventures, which is a goal that several of our staff members undertook on their own as one of their growth goals, everybody has their growth goal in our program, sometimes two, that they're accountable for, for growth and development, and they chose to do something outside of the school day for outdoor learning adventures, and they've met at La Marra Park and at Forest Park, and so they've done two of those, the last one being Saturday when it was freezing cold. They did it, and it turned out. At the elementary, there are a variety of things going on, there's a 3D printer club, book club, Boys Scouts, coding club, Girls on the Run, Girl Scouts, and Lego Club.
For our middle school, you know, as you go up, you start to expand your opportunities and your offerings, so at Brentwood Middle School, we've got 20 school-sponsored sports clubs or activities, and just to highlight a few from their list, the Eagle Hour tutoring is a joint venture between high school students and middle school students that might need a little extra help, it's a way to get high school students involved and give them maybe some community service hours or A-plus hours, and also give middle school students that need a little extra help an opportunity to get what they need. National Junior Honor Society, Pokemon, you know, when I talked to Dr. Wierstein about this, he was like, it's just, it's, it's what kids want, so if this is what they wanted, and this is what was gonna get them in a room together and get them back engaging with each other, then that's what we're gonna do. If in a couple of years it fizzles out and we have something different, then that's what we're gonna have, but just having those kind of, those one-offs, or, you know, what do you want to do, and then let's create an opportunity for it. The robotics is a great example, they, they work on their own at the middle school, but because of the logistics and having a shared campus with the high school, they do some things side by side or in unison at the same time, so, you know, kids can, middle school kids can work on their individual things, but still be connected to that next level of the high school robotics club. And then the Student Lighthouse is, is part of the Leader in Me Program, it's really about student leadership, it's giving students a chance to develop leadership skills, to develop school events and opportunities to, you know, get students involved. Dr. Wierstein also said it's, it's his kind of student building council, if you would, so if staff and administration have ideas, they'll go to that group first and say, hey, this is what we're thinking, they'll bounce it off of it, you know, what do you think, how will the students, you know, relate to this, or will it resonate with them, or do we need to tweak it, and the kids will give them some good insight on, you know, that specific idea, or maybe how to redirect it for success. And then, you know, there's always community service projects, if you look out in the hallway, there's a ton of canned goods and things like that, the middle school had their food drive. So for, at the high school, 27 school clubs and activities, and it's the same kind of thing, you know, what are you passionate about, what do you want to do, let's create a club for it, let's find a sponsor for it, let's find a group of kids that can get together and you guys can, you know, can do it. 14 vicious sports and activities, we all know about the state-sponsored sports, but what are the, you know, you usually don't hear about the activities, well, the Scholar Bowl and the speech debate and theater team are the two that we offer. And then there's also kind of a category, which it's not really, or it's not totally vicious sanctioned, but they call it an emerging sport or activity, so it's things that, that are kind of regional, so water polo, field hockey, girls lacrosse, so it's things that, you know, haven't taken off yet or kind of localized in the St. Louis area or the Kansas City area, boys volleyball, but for us, that's esports, so esports is an emerging one, we have a team, but that one is most likely going to be a state-sponsored activity in the near future just because of logistics and how, you know, if you have the devices and you have the people and internet connection, you can do it. And then our, our field hockey is another one that's kind of, you know, localized, so it's an emerging sport. Community service, we talked about all the, that's a student council food drive, so that was, that's theirs, I'll give them that. But also a senior service day for, for our seniors at the high school to get out in the community, connect with community members that need some help taking care of their yard to rake their leaves. So on Friday, December 2nd, they're, they're taking from 1:00 to 5:00 o'clock, and they're gonna rake as many yards as they can in that window to help the community. And then moderated discussions, panels, presentations about Black History Month, the Extended Advisory Period, the Feminist Coalition Club, panels with recent graduates and how's college going, what's that experience like, and then presentations about social, emotional learning and counseling.
So there's lots of opportunities. What I gathered data-wise is that about 70% of high schoolers engage in one of those things. So then there's 30%, and I told Tony, wouldn't it be great if 100% had a something? And we started joking, but I've heard of lettuce club, and he heard of bread club, and like, just an opportunity for the kids to make those connections, so that school isn't just something you go to and go home, but it's a place where you're accepted and engaged and welcomed, and you have people with like thinking and diverse thinking, and everybody can come together and celebrate something in common as far as these clubs. So it would be my goal to see that be 100%, but I only have the little people, so I'm gonna task somebody else with that one.
And like, like we talked about, you know, it's all student-centered, so if students are engaged, the likelihood that that will bleed over into family, into the community, and into staff, you know, if, if students are bought in and they're really engaged in, in activities at school, you know, their parents are gonna want to come to their games and concerts and plays and things like that, so it, you know, it starts in the middle and then just kind of spreads its way out.
So we had a nice committee of folks working on all of this, we're just giving it to you in a presentation, but these are the folks that put this all together so far, and will continue the hard work and the good work of focusing on engaging all of the community members. So I celebrate everybody on that screen for what they've done so far. What questions might you have about the engagement initiative?
I don't have questions, I have a couple of suggestions. Recently, I've had some families email me or text me who they need to report to if their kids are sick at high school, and so it was Laura Brown, and my kids have had a lot of orthodontist appointments lately, so I was always emailing Mrs. Robertson, and so she told me about Trista Lewis, and so since we have a new person that replaced her, maybe introducing her in one of our new, our next communications across the district so that people will know, because they weren't sure, do they let the nurse know if their kid is gonna be sick, or who do they know? So that might be something like, if we have new staff as well, maybe we could kind of satellite them and introduce them to the community or our parents. The senior community, what we used to do years ago, I had grandparents who wanted to come see my kids, but they didn't want to go at night, so I had asked an elementary school if I could bring them during the dress rehearsal, which is during the day, because the kids walk over and they practice, and it was a huge success, like, we then started telling some of our friends who had grandparents who didn't want to drive at night, and there was probably somewhere between 10 to 12 that would come for a couple of years in a row, so maybe even doing something like that, where some of our kids can't come back that night for one reason or another, or parents might work, or it just doesn't work out, but they'd have an audience there when they got to do it during the school day, but they didn't, but they didn't get to do it at night, so it would be a win-win for kids, and then for our senior community, who maybe had young kids or grandkids, but they're out of state and they can't see those performances, so that might be something to do, you know, as a... So that might be something to do, you know, as a, as a thing. There was one more thing. Do we still, I guess at the elementary level, connect families and do like a buddy system? That was a really good thing that we did at the elementary level. And we, I mean, those relationships are huge now. Like, we would invite them to come and trick or treat. And now like, the moms still get together in my daughter's sophomore class from, from the city, from Brentwood, from wherever, because we just fostered those relationships back in elementary school and then just kept them going.
I will ask Carolyn Cindy about that and see where they are with that. It sounds like a great thing, so I'll see where they're at with that. I'm not aware of it, I don't know if you're aware.
I think so Mark Twain does, and they've started, I think they took a couple of years off during COVID, but now it's like the fifth graders and kindergarteners and pairing them up.
Maybe if that kind of has fallen off in the middle school and high school, even though they're middle school and high school kids, maybe just reintroducing that would be, would be great. And then I found out, there's two more things, sorry. I found out a long time ago that we actually had Spanish papers for orientation and Spanish papers for this and that. Some families didn't even know that we had that, that we could actually send papers home. So as you're looking at your data and you're finding out, maybe some of the people, maybe it's a language barrier, do we have all those different forms in different languages? And have we really made those families aware? Because maybe they're afraid to say, I can't read it, or I can't speak English or whatever, to the extent that they want to be able to. And then, yeah, that's really important.
You can always email me later, Carrie.
Yeah. If you mail the last one, we'll get it to the committee. All of those can be potential barriers and solutions.
I remembered it. So I actually helped some families get glasses. Another thing I think that's really important that a lot of people do not know about is that there are ways for us to help our families get dental visits, to get glasses, for things like that. So if that's not already in some of the talks that you're having, I think it's a great program that isn't really talked about, but if you ask the right people or they get you in touch with the right people, then we can help people who don't know that, you know, their kids need glasses, or, you know, kids don't have to be embarrassed and have to have those tough conversations. It's really prevalent sometimes in high school where the kids can't see and they don't want their friends to know. And you find out more when they're getting ready to get their driver's license, when they can't pass the driver's license test. So even like kind of reaching out and finding out about stuff like that. I don't know if we still do it, but we used to do stuff at SLU. And there was a day where we would send kids down and they got to have free dental and things like that. But then I think that kind of gets lost as the kids get older and they forget about, you know, that in high school.
You make some really great points, you know? And so those are all things that the committee can take back and then institute that at each of the building levels, you know, where appropriate. So that's great. I know that we at B E C C, we have Turkish, we have Bulgarian, we have Chinese, Spanish, Japanese. We have all kinds of languages going on, but our forms are only in the English. So that's something that we ourselves could look at and look at translating those effectively. So you make a lot of really, really great points. We do have the grand friends and some magic bus. I don't know about this magic bus, but I'm about to learn about this magic bus to get some grand friends in in the spring to do some things with our littles as well. So be prepared for another video because we'll have grand friends in it, I am sure. I thought, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we, and maybe we're, I don't know when we last did it or if we're still doing it, but there was always a senior citizens open house in March, and I suspect that fell off a couple of years ago. Are we still doing that?
Cease during COVID.
So that used to be very well attended.
Yeah, we handed out, we handed out food, but we weren't able to host, but we're going to do it again this year.
Oh, good.
And I think it was really well received when we did it in the cafeteria at the, at the middle school. That was huge. It was a little bit hard for them to get into some of those locations, but I remember hearing them say, oh my God, you know, this was this and this was that when I was here. Because some of them have been here their whole lives. So now, maybe now with elementary school being done, maybe that's someplace that we have it, or maybe if we have it in the spring before we open that building up to the kids or the summer, maybe we have a place there where we can kind of see what we're doing.
I know there were one, at least once, some of the kids from the preschool would come and make a presentation, and I know there was snippets from the high school play that the kids would come in and, and it was large, it was well-attended. You know, I'm the old guy looking out for the senior citizens.
What are some of the things, is there anything else Keith that like?
Old people like?
No, I'm not saying old at all. I don't mean it like that. But like, if you, if and when you decide to step down from the board, what are some things that you've kept in contact with that you would definitely see something you want to continue to be communicated? Think about it.
You know, that's, that's a good question. I hadn't really ever thought about it. But, you know, things, we started sending these recently, these newsletters to the community that I'm getting copies of. I think that's great, you know? And I don't know who all is going to, but just keeping information in people's hands so they know what's going on. And, you know, for example, if there's a high school play coming up, then I wouldn't have really known that other than it's listed in stuff I get here. You know, do the folks in the community know about that? They're able to know if they're interested, but which way is that stuff just in their, you know, mind in their lap? You know, that kind of thing.
Is it Brian's report that he sends us on Fridays?
No.
Because some of that's something he sent us.
Yeah, it's a, every, every other week is, is a Brentwood bulletin newsletter. Those are kind of, those are in our book.
I love that, great. Yeah.
So, yeah, the bulletin goes to all district families and staff, and then on the odd weeks or in between, it's just an employee update for employee-related things. If it's policy, if it's our food vaccine clinic, things like that, just to keep staff informed about things that, you know, maybe get sent out as an email but get lost in the shuffle. Speaking of the fall play, we missed the fall play in the, in the Friday bulletin, so spoiler alert. There's a, there's an extra, extra edition of the Brentwood bulletin coming out tomorrow that will have all, that will have all the information about the, what is it? Arsenic?
Arsenic.
Arsenic.
I think one, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, something styled like that, that goes to the community more generally, you know, with stuff that might be interesting out there to kind of answer Carrie's question, I think, you know, people would enjoy getting that.
The only thing we have to do is, is collect the, you know, how do we reach those people? So if it's just creating a form and saying, do you want to receive our bi-monthly district newsletter, add me to the mailing list?
So I think that is a really, really important, I mean, if you look at your definition, which I like, of community stakeholder is a big piece, right? So a lot of the content you put up there is great, it's around the school, but, I mean, look, the reality is, we're here because of a paying tax base, right? And if you look, the majority of our tax base, they don't use our services directly. So I would ask if you all, how do we go do exactly that, right? The plays, because here's what happens, in the absence of us being really proactive around this, what happens then is every three to five years, we have to go make an ask for tax money, right? Why not actively engage them as we said? So I would ask back if you all, that's, all this other stuff is fantastic, that's great, but I really think we need to focus on doing those things. Look, there's a voter registrar, there's a registrar out there, right? We can get access to that. How do we go do that so that it's not, the only time we're pinging everyone is, hey, we need you to go vote yes to cut us another check. I think this is a really good opportunity to have you all think, how do we better engage them? Because it also then helps recruit, right? It's, oh my gosh, look at this. Now it becomes a self-fulfilling, right, thing? And I just think historically, we do not do a good job. The only time we go out to the broader group is when something's going on, hey, sorry, we're ripping down streets and we're building stuff and making all this stuff where we need money. So I just love all of this, but I really would ask us to really think about that stakeholder piece of this pie and figure out one or two things. Plays are an awesome thing, right? Like, it's awesome, because it's something they can come do and, you know, I just think we really need to figure that out and it's soon.
I think maybe even a day game on a Saturday, so that maybe you would see more seniors come out on an afternoon, because again, it's night and it's dark and they can't see at night. But if we have one Saturday afternoon game, you might see more of the community come and see it.
And those barriers really do apply to all of the spokes of that wheel. So identifying those type of things, like what can we do to remediate it for everybody, for the stakeholders? And that's more of a district.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a low engagement person to, part of low engagement person to have a barrier. They can still be involved, but if they can't drive at night, or if they are not so great at technology and things like that, so.
Or maybe we could get some of our families here on a Saturday because they work Monday through Friday, and maybe they could come to a football game for months with their kids.
So I'm kind of curious, Keith, you mentioned, you know, prior to COVID, they had different programs. What are some of the differences prior to COVID to now? Are some of the programs that, you know, we decided to kind of push off to the side, whether it be, you know, I'll use McGrath as an example. This is the first year they, they had a Lego club. And it's, there's a backlog of kids that want to attend, but they can't attend. And I know in previous, there was a chess club and there was a science club, and there was a club for a lot of different things, but I think COVID hit and then all that stuff kind of tapered off. Prior to COVID, I, I look at our community as very engaged in the district. I think there's obviously areas that we can continue to improve, improve upon and increase our communication and get more people engaged. But, you know, what are the differences prior to COVID to now that we can kind of connect those dots? And, you know, maybe it's not every club that we say we want to bring back, but can we get back to, to kind of where we were and continue to expand upon that?
That's, that's exactly the thinking that we charged the committee with. So we've come up with this structure, right? And so the next steps is that they're going to go back to their respective schools and they're going to put together a body of folks there to look at just that kind of thing and to look at the barriers and to look at what's around them as far as community stakeholders and how to engage them again. So each building is tasked to do that. In our next meeting, we actually are providing time for that. So we're not having a large committee meeting. We broke it down and said, you know, take it back and have that smaller committee at your building level to do just that work. And then the next step is bringing it back and then taking those big district initiatives and taking that back out, you know, at the en masse scale and figuring out how do we do, just like what you were saying, for the community of stakeholders around us. So that's the next steps in this work. Hopefully, when we update you, we'll have the answers to all of that, but that's what's developing right now with the committee.
Okay, great.
Well, I'd add on to that. So we have talked with the principals coming into this year and they, you know, and they've talked to their faculty and staff that, you know, we, as you know, took away all barriers around engagement due to COVID. So while the two years before, they obviously had a lot of barriers for having mixing of grade levels and everything else, but we said, that's all off the table at this point. We're comfortable. You have your full budget that the board had approved, I believe it was three or four years ago for all of these different after-school clubs. So at this point, they understand it's just a matter of engaging students' interest and of course, you know, finding teachers that are willing to, to man those, those after-school clubs. So they've done a good job of getting, you know, getting it most of the way back, but our goal is to be fully back and even more than we were before.
If we don't have staff that wants to step up, can we look at outside resources? Could we even look at some of the senior citizens in our community who maybe would want to, could we do some kind of thing in the polls where we kind of advertise some of the, the needs that we would have for our clubs? And maybe some of them are retired, but they don't want to be fully retired, and maybe they were a good chess player, or maybe they were a good this or that, and maybe they could come in and, I don't know if we, since we probably offered some kind of stipend to the teachers, would there be some kind of thing in the budget where they could be paid or they can volunteer or whatever? I don't know.
And we are, I, I did, let's see, the coding club at Mark Twain is a perfect example of that. It's a, it's a volunteer that runs the club, but we still have to have a staff person there. So, you know, we pay the staff person and then the individual from the community comes and volunteers and does it, and, you know, the staff person is there to supervise and to, to make sure, you know, logistically, everything is, is going for the issue. But yes, those are opportunities for that.
I appreciate all the information. I went to the Missouri School Board Conference a couple of weeks ago, and this is something districts all over the state are trying to get their communities back into their buildings. And I will share some of the ideas, not right now. I'll send you an email with some ideas that other districts are doing because they really want to make sure that they're reaching out and getting feedback on the direction that they're going and the programs that they're offering. And hearing this tonight, it's just, it's great to see what we are already doing and then the desire to move to the next level. So I appreciate the information.
Great. Yeah, I really appreciate with this committee and, you know, coming into the year, worked a lot with, with Tony and Kristen as champions, and their challenge was, you know, the goal of this committee was not just to, hey, let's plan one or two more events and, and say that we met our goals for this. Let's really look at those deeper underlying, you know, issues and barriers in terms of what does it mean for a student to be engaged? What does it mean for a community to be engaged in the school? And then how can we have, you know, solid, long-term, accountable plan to really move the needle on those things? And I think they've, you know, got a great foundation for, for moving us in that direction. So thank you for all that work, you and your committee.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, now we have our fourth strategic plan committee with our champions, Dr. Chambers and Dr. Hotstetler, who have been engaging in the very important work of our equity committee.
All right, well, they're getting that set up. Good evening. Hello. Nice to meet you today. Yes, I'm, I'm in charge of the flicker. Okay, great. All right, so we had to decide that, but that was the big, we got it worked out. So we're going to start off just with a graphic. We wanted to show you how equity, diversity, and inclusion, how these, these efforts really impact the overall experience for every single one of the Brentwood schools. The alignment that equity, diversity, and inclusion efforts have to the three other core areas that you've heard of the strategic plans, academic achievement, social emotional health, and community engagement, really impacts how we surround students holistically with their experience here at Brentwood. Academic achievement, really addressing the mind, social emotional heart, social emotional health, really the heart of our students. And then the community engagement, how we surround our students with opportunities and engage our community, just to provide a great experience of opportunities for each student. So we wanted to just give you a picture of how it all works together. And then we are excited to take you through a history of the work around equity, diversity, and inclusion that has been engaged in the district for the last four years, and then the committee's vision of where we're going to continue to work forward. So we're going to kind of be through a little journey here. So as you know, in 2018, 19, the board education and community stakeholders engaged in collaborative efforts to really identify the vision around service to every student in Brentwood. The individualization of this vision launched the efforts of an equity committee the following year, and the board's commitment to serving the individual needs of each student really serves as the foundation of the systems and structures that were created to elevate the experiences for each student in Brentwood. Over the last three years, equity committee champions, Dr. Andrew Wiederstein and Cindy Noye guided a team of committee staff to engage in activities around highlighting diverse talents and experiences, bringing community together, and defining the role and the purpose of equity leaders in the district. The district developed an equity mission to serve as a guide for future work in the district. The equity mission statement, we will actively embrace our diverse identities, intentionally engaging one another and deepening our relationship, aligns to the district aligns to the district vision of personally serving each and every student in the district.
I do more than just click but. So as a part of that effort and trying to really spearheading connect, last March, the administrative team, composed of building principals and leadership, and then also central office administration, really did a deep data dive to see what is going on within those areas that are, that have been highlighted within these different committees. Committees. And so we looked at a variety of data sources. And from that data source, we looked at student data performance. We looked at intervention data, who's being referred to intervention, who's staying in intervention? What is that cycle within that? IEPs, who are those students that are receiving IEP services, referral data? What's going to the office? What's being held in classes? What are some commonalities across buildings and within the district through a variety of lenses? So we looked at that, looking at enrollment classes for gifted, special education, dual credit, ELL. All of those are just data points, but if you look at them through a broader lens, you can start to see those connections. So that was that a very intentional dive into that. Additionally, the parents prayer reports that you've heard other committees talk about, that they've been up here. And then the surveys, those engagement surveys on staff belonging that were done last year. And then also the high school student, faculty and family, race, culture and climate survey that was done previously as well. So taking that information and really trying to find, identify trends and commonalities across the district and buildings. Is this still me? Yeah, okay, still me. Then within that, from that March, within that March meeting, we took all of those key areas that were highlighted and identified through those data, through that data and created the strategic goal. And that strategic goal is that the Brentwood School District will improve the sense of belonging for students in historically excluded groups by examining barriers and systematic practices and engaging leaders in equity training. And that is what we started for, we utilized to guide the work going into this year's committee. And so that's kind of that background and all of those, all those pieces. So there's been a lot of work done. We want to make sure that it's streamlined and we don't lose the historical pieces of it. But we also continue to move forward and evolve.
So this summer, we, so we had a goal that was based on the data. We followed the, the foundation that was set by the board, by the community and by previous equity committees. And so we had this new goal that was established at the end of last year. And so our next step was to ensure that we had a voice and involvement from all of the different buildings. We have multiple buildings, multiple leaders, and they have been engaging in work around equity and inclusion to search the needs of their individual school communities. And we really wanted to bring everyone together so that we had a district-wide effort around what are we going to do to ensure belonging for each student globally as, as a district of Brentwood student across all buildings? So we accessed our leaders, our teacher leaders and our administrators across all buildings. So we sent a survey out asking the question, what is the work around equity that you're engaged in? And where do you believe we need to go? What topics do we need to address collectively as a united district? So that we can begin to ensure that every child in every building across the district has an experience that is high quality and that they feel that, that they belong to the community in which we start. So the survey went out to all of our staff members that were part of the equity committee, all of our professional development committees, so district KDC leaders. They also received the survey as well as school administrators. And they were able to answer those questions very openly. And then we brought all that data together and I, and we asked our representative team to come together over the summer, volunteering their own time to come together to pull this data apart, start to ask questions, unpack it, look at the data and identify some really specific targeted areas that we could address some goals, objectives, that we could really put some action into, some tangible action steps to. So this was that equity design team that unpacked, we, we spent a whole afternoon in the summer. And it was, it was great because we had survey responses from a, all buildings were represented, all voices, all voices from all buildings came to play. And this group, we just started asking some really hard questions. What do we need to do to make sure every student, every child belongs in our community and feels that, that genuine sense? So this design team came together in July and unpacked all this data and came with three very actionable objectives and strategies that, that equity committee can begin to put action steps to. So the three strategies that they came up with is recognize the historical context of oppressive systems and privilege in St. Louis and Brentwood. So recognize where we are historically. Identify when personal beliefs and experiences of our staff and/or processes and procedures in our schools perpetuate the oppression of some students. So identify where we have some areas to grow. And then finally, celebrate cultures of individuals, elevating voices and experiences of students, families and staff who have been historically excluded so that we can build these authentic relationships which create this environment of belonging. So recognize where we are historically, identify where there's barriers and let's celebrate individual, individuals. So that moved us to this committee. So yeah, go ahead, you're up.
So then the community membership for, the committee membership for this year has equal representation from across the district. This is, I want to note that it is an instructional committee. So within that, it's an instructional design team, so you'll see representatives, two to three representatives from each building, from our instructional staff. And the reason I point that out is when we move to our, moving forward, there's also been intentionality in our operational staff and including them in this work. So when we talk about staff, then there'll be times where that would be instructionally that we're supporting that and also operationally. It's valuable and imperative that we engage both operational and instructional. But those approaches and how we do that may differ based on roles and responsibilities. Wrong button, sorry. Got to get fired from the button. So then when we met as a committee, we have met once, we have our other committee meeting, committee member meetings scheduled. When we met, what we did is we engaged the committee in looking at that goal that was written in March of 2022. And we really went by line by line and defined each word within that goal and in that mission to say, okay, what does this actually mean? And the first thing that the committee came to was, we really do believe that engaging district leadership and training was its own piece. So we made that an action step. So the goal was revised to be that the Brentwood School District will improve the sense of belonging for students from historically excluded groups by examining barriers and barriers and systematic practices. So that is where we went on that. And then that leads us to our action steps. So that's what we're going to lead into now. There's much more detail than this. These are just summaries of what those are. So in August of this year, instructional staff was engaged. We did a district-wide professional development at the start of school on dignity, equity and inclusion work. We've partnered with a special school district and the district, and the special school district, executive director of dignity, equity and inclusion, and then also one of the assistants in that area to come in. And they did our training here, district-wide, filled the room. And then we've continued to engage with them. And what has been determined by that committee is that we will have a year-long training.
I found this on the web.
Seriously. That will engage the equity leadership team on, you know, it'll be a systems level learning about building and leading an inclusive space for all, space for all. So that's introspection, systems changes and educational equity. And within that, our members of our committee, we also have brought in and invited operational staff members and instructional staff members. We look to include nurses, food services, custodial maintenance, all those different aspects because each experience, each lived experience brings value to that. And then from there, that will be, in addition to that, is all central office administrators and building level administrators. And so we've arranged for those to happen four times this year.
So it's four.
Four times to our trainings, each time the same group of individuals. And we've asked for the supervisors or leaders to be involved, but also one of their staffs. So we're, we're very intentionally trying, ensuring that we're empowering staff leaders as well to become part of the equity leadership team district-wide.
So then we can build, continue to build that baseline knowledge and common understanding. So we can continue to build upon that foundation is the idea behind that. Additionally, and so that is through this school year. And then in the summer into next school year, then there will be a book study for the equity leadership team that will be a guided book study and will address the individual needs and really focus on that sense of belonging. And then what typically ends up happening when we look at student belonging and engagement, we also start to see that a greater engagement of staff and the community starts to happen as well. So when listening to them talk about community engagement, I was like, hey, they're taking part for a presentation. But that is what we know through research that tends to increase that.
Okay, so moving to that second strategy, that second objective that we were looking at identifying and addressing when personal beliefs and experiences or procedures and processes in our schools may perpetuate the oppression of some students. So again, this is a two-year plan. So what we're looking at, the group really brainstormed around what does this mean? How can we, what, what action do we put to this? The first was, so this year, we're going to start to look at creating a process for identifying and problem solving equity concerns at the building level. So if there are things happening at the building level, you know, as we're looking at our handbooks, as we're looking at, you know, looking at identifying students for specialized programming, as we're looking at our address code, as we're looking at any situation that occurs, our decision-making process in our buildings, do we have a way to really unpack that and make sure that we're holistically considering all aspects of the decisions that we're making? And so we want to be able to provide a, a tool for all buildings to be able to use that has some questions. It just has kind of some standardized questions. Have we thought about this, this and this when we're looking at our processes, our procedures and our decision-making? Next year, that would then go into looking more specifically, that committee would take a look at curricular materials, resources, district-wide programming, handbooks to really unpack, you know, are we really providing services for all students across, across the district?
Can I add something real quick?
Yeah.
In addition to this, part of that baseline training for the staff that we're engaging in is also to help develop a lens. So often here, I think we use the word equity lens. It's really just how you look at something. So if I walk into a room, am I looking through and have I been trained to know what to look for? So that is what it is. It's really expanding that because if we engage somebody in a conversation who may not have that lens, then the answer might be, yep, absolutely, that's there. But then if we make sure that they have that baseline and foundational knowledge, then it may impact how we are actually viewing a situation.
So I'll give a very tangible example, back to the last conversation we were just having. So we walked into a football game, for example, and we look at the audience of who's attending all of our participants who are attending football games. Do we have representation across our community of those that are engaging, those are able, you know, those that are able to attend our football celebrations or our plays? And if not, are we taking time to be very intentional to ask the questions, who's not involved? Which is why I would say this, you know, equity, inclusion and diversity really goes across academic achievement, community engagement and social emotional learning. When we look at it from that equity lens, we start to ask the questions, well, who's not here? And how do we engage them to be here? So it's really just kind of a broadening the view of how we're increasing our engagement opportunity, academic programming and our social emotional supports for all children in the district. Okay, so the last objective about celebrating cultures of individuals and elevating voices and experiences of students, family, staff who have been historically excluded to build authentic relationships and create an environment of belonging for each student. So again, we have kind of a two-year and, and, and action step this year, moving into action step next year. So the action step this year, the committee came up, again, brainstormed some ideas around this. And first off, thinking about, and again, going back to an earlier conversation, a welcoming process for new staff, students and families to the district. So when we have a new staff member, to, to your point, Carrie, when we have a new staff member that comes in, how do we welcome and make sure that everyone knows who that staff member is so that they are immediately part of our community? The same goes for our new students as they come in, as well as our new families. What process do we have to just wrap our Brentwood arms around every folks coming in and immediately provide them an experience of being a part of just something awesome? And so the committee is going to, is tasked this year, we have been tasked ourselves with coming up with that welcome process so that we should, can we assure somebody doesn't just look through the cracks and start, you know, start school four weeks after the beginning of the year and they just have to kind of get in there and, and get to work? We really miss that opportunity to welcome somebody in and make them immediately part of, part of something bigger. So this year, we're going to work on what that welcoming process looks like. And that does extend to staff as well. And then also generating a district-wide culture calendar, a celebrated holidays event, which are representative of the community. So we do have an opportunity by the end of the year, as parents come in, just kind of gathering that information around what holidays and traditions does your family celebrate? And knowing that we are a, a community that has, you know, a vast assortment of holidays and experience and traditions. And so pulling all of those together and putting them together in one culture calendar that is just celebrated collectively across the district, that we highlight these events and, and these celebrations of individuals. But then we do it as a community so that we are allowing everyone to feel a part of what we're celebrating. It's an opportunity for us to learn from each other, but also just to celebrate the uniqueness that everybody brings together. So that would be created, the goal would be this year that that is created. But then ongoing, as you see at the bottom, acknowledgement, celebration of those events are ongoing throughout the year. Then we have next year, moving into forming school-wide equity teams, including students, teachers, support staff, families, led by those trained building equity leaders to elevate voices and maintain an environment of belonging. So what that may look like is a group, an equity team at each building that has representatives that just say, hey, how are things going? Are we, you know, is everybody feeling a sense? We'll do ongoing belonging surveys twice a year so they can look at that and say, how are people feeling about their sense of belonging in our community? And as we look at data, as we know, when we do surveys, we look at data, then it's, okay, so here is what it is now. What are we going to do about it? What actions we take to address and respond? When we ask someone for ideas, we want to make sure it responds, that, that we hear, that we hear the ideas. And so that those teams, those school equity teams would be really looking at what's unique to their own building? And do, are they, are they meeting the needs of all kids in the school? And do kids, can they show up authentically as themselves and, and feel a part of something bigger? So that's the ongoing work for next year as we look at that.
So during COVID, everybody had internet. Is that still true that everybody has internet? Or once COVID ended, was that, did that end as well? And do we know, when you talk about, up here, you were talking about curricular materials and resources and every level, making sure it's equitable. Is the online services and the technology equitable still?
We kept the same resources that we had during COVID. So, you know, I'll, I'll double check with the principals. But my understanding is a hundred percent of our families have Wi-Fi access or we've set them up with Wi-Fi access.
I want to highlight, that's a, that's, that is exactly the kind of question that, that team would, you know, if there's a staff member or a parent or a student even who has a question like that, that gets yielded to a group to really unpack that, to make sure that we don't have barriers in place or equitable access to resources, materials. So that's exactly, those are the type of questions that those school groups would be unpacking and really looking at. Are we serving the needs of everyone?
And then you were talking about new families coming into the buildings, things like that. The journalism committee club or whatever, we had two, not to say we haven't had other students new, but just one that stood out that I just noticed recently. Cause I'm finding about all these different articles that our students are writing and the Nest and all these different things that I didn't even know about, which I think is another thing we should, you know, publicize. Even using some of our students to maybe satellite some of our new families. Like we have two gals who came here who are female hockey players. And so one of the high school students did a story on them. So that was kind of neat. You know, if you didn't have a child in high school, you could still hear about, about this or whatever. So even maybe. So even maybe tapping into some of our students who want to be journalists or whatever, not only the staff, but then having some of these kids go and approach those families, or their peers, or younger students, whatever, and write about other students across the board that are new, and maybe featuring their families or whatever, would be a nice thing.
I love that. And even, I've seen the videos Mark Hain does, they've got their old news crew that goes out. And I mean, so yeah, it's a great opportunity just for students to engage in, and one, connecting with a new student, right? Because when we have new folks coming in, it's even that experience of going to talk to somebody who doesn't, who you don't know, right? That's a skill in and of itself. And so it's that skill, plus then how you highlight and celebrate somebody and what they bring.
What was really exciting, I thought, was we just had the gal who placed fourth in state. They did, I don't know what you call it, but before she left first state, everybody came out into the hallways and did like that walk. I thought that was really awesome. Maybe that's something that we do even at elementary level for a new kid who's coming in. Like, how excited would you be if everybody was in the hallway the first day, you know, you arrived? You know, welcoming you. I mean, that would be huge, because you're already terrified to come into a building that you don't know anybody. But if we knew when that kid was starting, and we just said to the parent, hey, instead of coming at eight, why don't you come at nine so that we can do this? Because this is what we'd like to do at Brentwood. That would be a huge tradition to start, and what a way to like, start that first impression with the family. I thought that was pretty awesome at the high school level, so why not use it across the board? Or teachers, teachers do that, you know, when you guys have your, your beginning of the summer thing, have a walk-through of all those people. I mean, that's a, that's a statement right there.
And that's, those are the kind of the welcoming processes that we're talking about. That we just, yeah, we're going to generate all these ideas, and then this is just what we're going to do because it's important to ensure that everyone feels like they belong. Absolutely. That's great.
Maybe this is a question for you, Brian. So, I mean, these are two committees, right? And both have talked about pushing this work back down to the buildings. And what I'm very sensitive to is it does take active engagement from everyone in the buildings. But this is two of four committees where all four, except we're pushing work and things back down to the buildings. And how are we, you all as committee heads, making sure we are, one, in fairness, two, we need everyone engaged, but two, it's a lot to ask everyone to be engaged in everything. How are we managing that? Because I, I love all these ideas, but I also feel like all of a sudden we have lots of ideas, and it's really hard to be focused and responsive. And quite honestly, a lot of feedback we get is, hey, there's already a lot of burden on the system. So how are we managing that? So that we're not just putting words on a page, right, but we are really moving to new?
Well, yeah, I'll start off with that. So part of that was, even goes back, and we're continuing to always look at that timeline of strategic planning, and we keep kind of moving it back even earlier to realize, you know, when can we let the buildings know what those goals are? So a key part of that goes all the way back to the original planning in March of last year when we set these goals. And part of what the leadership team did was we talked about not only what would be maybe some potential strategies and action steps for these committees, but then how could the buildings tie into that? And then what is the distinction between what's appropriate for a district-level committee to take on as an action step? And then what's appropriate for a building-level committee to take on? So going into the year, you know, the principals did know what these goal areas were in all four. So they were able to look at, you know, their building committees, and then also even attach those to, you know, every teacher in the district has one to two personal growth areas which fall in one of these four areas. So that's a piece of the process. And then in addition, what we're really working to do is have every member of these strategic planning committees really empowered to be that building representative from those committees. So we've asked the principals at every faculty meeting to give these people time to report out on the progress of their committees, what the work is, and then, you know, get the buildings involved where appropriate for doing that. So those are some of the processes we've put into place around that.
I would say in addition to what Dr. Lee said, one of the focuses for our committee has really been that alignment, that is vertical alignment. So our kids start with us in pre-K, some of them, some of them come in later through 12. So we want to make sure that that's a continuation of that support and system. And so then that systematic will interview at how we're doing this so that it is equitable across and accessible to all students and families.
And it, then, everybody feels it's doable, and that they're able to manage all the stuff that's involved? Because wasn't that one of your questions, Jamie, like?
Yeah, I mean, I, we, six years on the board, right? There's a lot of pressure on administrators, teachers, faculty, and staff. The only way this really works, right, is if administrators, teachers, faculty, and staff are fully engaged. All I just feel is it's four different committees with a lot of great ideas. I can see why we hear, hey, it's a lot. And so I'm just highlighting, hopefully, we have, part of our process is to make sure that we are as aligned as possible, right? Like, that awesome idea of roaming the halls and cheering and screaming, that can happen pretty easily. But you know what? Takes time and energy from administrators, faculty, and staff. So I just, I love seeing all these things. I just am very, very sensitive to feedback we get is, hey, you're asking a lot of us. And in fairness, I want to make sure that we are, you know, what we can help is make sure you have the resources, and that's where I'm going with this.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think that's a great point. And, you know, I think, you know, Dr. Hostel or Dr. Chambers have done a great job too. Because in terms of equity, I mean, this is, you know, you see all the interconnectability of these action items, and they've done a really great job of not seeing, you know, equity as kind of being a separate item over here to work on, but to get us a better sense as a district on how it's touching all these other areas and having some actual action steps that we can take to kind of move the needle on those things. So I think under their leadership, we were, there's much better alignment, to be honest, than there was in previous years. There was great efforts, but I think we were missing that connection.
I think it was intentional also when we were looking at timelines, to really try and space out what we felt was manageable this year. And our primary goal was to really engage leadership and training, just as that baseline. Because if we're not speaking a common language and we don't have a common understanding, it's really hard to move forward, and then you're moving all around. And so in an effort to streamline for a lot of those things was that a very intentional training aspect, and then the book study. So yes, that is, it is an additional piece, but then also keeping a pulse on that. And I think through those surveys and different aspects of it, but I do think, you know, being intentional with, okay, how is this impacted? And how are they all interconnected? And then maybe looking at that from a district lens and saying, okay, where is this overlap? Now that all of these committees have met and are moving forward, and really looking back at that district level at a strategic alignment, district-wide.
And to the initial image of kind of looking at, and even all those action steps, when we have a systematic approach to looking at what we're doing with social-emotional, what we're doing with academic achievement, what we're doing with community engagement, really looking at what are we asking, to your point, of staff members to lift? Having representatives from every building is going to be crucial to that conversation to really saying, you know, what's doable? And how do we make sure we have a system in place that we can follow? That we're not trying to just come up with, you know, activities, but we're really looking at goals and hitting tangible objectives. So it's a great, that's a great point. And that alignment is going to be a heavy lift for all of the champions to come together to make sure that we're aligning timelines, we're looking at, you know, what is that added? Added pressure on obtained levels, yeah.
I think that's part of those tools that you've heard committees talk about. And those tools are being created in an effort to support, so that you aren't creating from scratch to address some of these needs. So it is really, I think, even though it is a heavy lift for committees to start with, and then making sure when we go through aligning those, but those tools are being put in place to support, not add to. It's to really relieve some of the pressures to get all that on your own and really create a systematic way to approach it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is exciting.
Yeah, that's wonderful. All right, next up, if we could have Ms. Clemmons come back up to talk about our yearly setting of early childhood tuition rates.
Well, thank you again for the investment that you've put into early childhood programming in this district so far, through parents as teachers, and through screening, and through our program at the BECC, our preschool program. We just really appreciate your perspective of knowing that a lot of learning happens prior to kindergarten, and it's important to the outcomes kindergarten and beyond. So we just really appreciate everything that you've done so far. We have 89 students, well, we're working on number 89. They'll be in the country next month. So we'll have 89 students in program, which is fantastic. It's a good healthy number. I always like to update you on our free and reduced, which was my initiative a couple of years ago when I got here. We do have seven students accessing that, paying from zero to, six of them paying from zero to $90, and one of them paying 75% tuition. I have a sliding scale, and then I also have the completely no-cost program. So we have a lot of students accessing that, and it's from a very diverse background. So thrilled to report that to you. We have 10 students attending our program through their services in an IEP. And so out of that 89, we have a lot of students just accessing us in a variety of ways. Rest of our students pay tuition to attend our general education programs. And we have a variety of selections, and I believe you have the selections in front of you. I'd like to propose or for your consideration what our rates will be next year. And I chose this board meeting on purpose because everybody's really excited to see the new building and to take tours and to enroll. And to do that, I have to have the information that they need to be able to enroll to keep that ball rolling for them. So I talked to the local area directors from other school districts in the area, and we would be the first to set our tuition rates at this point. But everybody is discussing approximately a 2% tuition increase, and said that's highly likely what they will do. They haven't had these discussions yet, so. But we were solidly right in the median last year with our tuition when I did the comps. I did that strong, heavy comp. And I anticipate that we will be solidly right there in the middle and with that, a 2% increase in tuition rates for next year. The reason for it is just basically to offset some of the costs that the program have incurred, inflation. And so that is what I'd like to propose for your consideration, is a 2% tuition increase. And you can see on the forms what that would look like.
If we could have a motion.
I move that we approve the BEC tuition rates as outlined. Second.
Discussion?
Really quick, have we, and have you heard any other districts talking about going to an all-year program? I've heard a little bit recently that, especially in the Brentwood area, there's not a lot of early childhood that accommodates all year round. And there's quite a few people that are, you know, limited on where they can look at, and then also limited on, you know, what to do with their children. Are you hearing anything across the districts? Are you hearing anything across any other communities?
Yes and no. Every, every district kind of has their own thing of what they do with the summer. The difficulty that those that have summer programs have is staffing it, because teachers need a break for the summer. So then how do you appropriately staff your classrooms over the summer? And so that's what's held us back, plus the building and the preparation, and just all of the other logistics that summer brings as far as attendance, and how would you work that out? So we offer a summer camp in the mornings of June to try to remediate some of that. And then what I hear other families do is they hire nannies, or college students, or high school students that want to make a few extra dollars over the summer. But, but there's nothing solidly in place or something that we've considered, but we could look at it.
I was just curious if any other districts had, had the same questions asked them, and where we were.
Some do, some don't.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I, we've all heard this before at various districts, but the big challenge, especially in a program like ours, which is, you know, heavy on teachers, certified teachers, is that generally they are not on a 12-month contract. They're necessarily looking to be on a 12-month contract, so that would be the challenge.
What's capacity for us? You said 89, what is our capacity?
It just depends on how the enrollment configuration comes together. We're pretty close to capacity in our mornings. Our afternoons are a little bit lighter because some of our students go home half-day, and we don't have too many that hold just in the PM, just because of the nature of two-year-olds and three-year-olds. They're mostly sleeping in the afternoon, so parents don't send them for the afternoon only. But our mornings are fairly full. I'd say we could probably take one or two and a couple of classes, and others are on a waitlist.
You mentioned comps, I'm just kind of curious, could you give me a couple of examples of comps that you pulled?
I pulled the comps last year, so they're in last year's report.
Okay.
I comped all of the St. Louis County area, there are schools that would respond to me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think they're out on the, Brian, we could get out on the drive, because she did it last year.
Oh, they're out.
In the archive somewhere.
Okay.
So historically...
I was curious, yeah.
We were solidly right in the middle.
Right in the middle, right, okay.
Which is a comfortable place to be. We won't, don't want to be the most expensive or the least expensive in the county.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, and just, you know, the district historically has supplemented the program to the tune of roughly $30,000 to $40,000 per year. So we've never, since I've been here, you know, ran the program, you know, in the black. But we're, you know, the board has been supportive of that. So this 2%, we would probably, if anything, we'll be supporting it a little bit more because as we know, you know, salaries and supplies this past year went up more than 2%.
Is that historically what we've done, is bumped it by 2%?
When I got here, it was on a freeze.
It was, okay.
And last year, we made our first increase, I believe it was a percent and a half.
It was.
Okay.
So it would be a percent and a half last year, and then 2% this year. But I think we were on a two-year freeze before that.
The first two years I was on, we raised it roughly a cost of $1.
Okay, okay.
But it does, I mean, that's an important point. If you ran the numbers on it, we are subsidizing a portion of it.
A portion of it, yeah.
Anything else, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your tuition rates are set.
Thank you.
All right, let's recruit some kiddos.
Two apparently.
Well, and some afternoon also. All right, next up, I'm looking for approval of our annual SSD agreement where they reimburse us for a portion of the early childhood special ed cost.
I move that we approve the SSD agreement as outlined.
Second.
Discussion?
Is there anything different in this one, Brian?
No.
All right, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved.
Next up, this is, Matt is going, Matt Norrod is going to tell us about the development of a new scholarship program that I have to offer eventually.
Excuse me, don't want to get too close to anybody and fight a little bit. So a few months ago, we were contacted by an alumni who was a survivor of an alumni who passed away several months ago. What this scholarship would be would be in memory of her life in the nursing field. Right now, we haven't established the bylaws that we would issue the scholarship. It's very much in its infancy where we would solely be asking to accept the donations from several people that had made individual checks to the school district. We have two other scholarships that are currently in place. This scholarship, the intent at this time is to provide an opportunity for a scholarship to a student of Brentwood that may pursue a nursing field or a medical... to a student of Brentwood that may pursue a nursing field or a medical type degree. What we're asking for at this time is just recognition of the list that's been proposed of the individuals providing resources to begin this program. And then later on, we would work with the family to set the standards of how we would issue this scholarship going forward once we have sufficient resources.
So, tell me if I'm wrong here, Matt, but basically we'll continue to, you know, accept donations into this program. You'll work with the families ultimately as those, as that increases to invest those funds and, and develop those bylaws, and they'll develop a yearly gift to our, our students over time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And what's the ask? There's a motions required. What are we approving actually?
Currently, we are solely by policy required to accept, ask our board to accept a donation. And then as a product tomorrow, I would mail out letters to the individuals who are donors, giving the letter stating our acceptance of the donation.
It is, I guess I can ask a question afterwards. I move that we approve the list of donors for the Slazek Memorial Fund. Second?
Discussion?
So, but let me, just want to clear, point four, this fund is now established. If, let's say Carrie and I want to cut a check, then we have to get approved, or how does it work after that?
So any donations to the school district by policy, we are in a position to present to the school board for acceptance.
And you are going to manage, the, the school board is going to manage these funds on behalf of, or how would that work?
What these would be is they would be pulled into our investments, a portion of that investment we would return to based on the daily rate of that, of that interest.
So it'd be managed like the other two scholarships that have been in existence?
They would get a monthly interest based upon our basis points that our current board resources are providing for our other district assets. We would not be gleaning interest from these. We would actually, at one time, so as you all remember, several months ago, six months ago, we were probably only receiving about fifteen basis points in our investments. Currently, we're at our times investments of about four and a half percent. So we actually have an opportunity, even though right now this is incremental, some of our other scholarships have a little bit more funds that they actually can benefit from our current interest rates.
Typically, what will happen is over, over time, whether it's, you know, it could be all at once, or it could be on small donations, but over time, let's say you get ten thousand dollars or something in that fund, and then they could have it set up to, it could even just be whatever, instead of just a set five hundred bucks a year, it could be whatever it generates in that year could be, you know, so they got a couple of different choices on their bylaws on how they want to allocate that over time.
So you as the CFO, you as the CFO are tasked with managing this, just keeping track of it?
Yes.
So as that donation comes in, or I guess we just haven't had any donations to our other scholarships?
Not to the scholarships. The only ones we've had, which the board has approved, have been, you know, like a couple robotics contributions over the years.
Okay. Those kind of things. So is there no minimum that we have set as a board to set up a scholarship fund? It could just be fifty bucks, and you're going to take the time and energy to do that?
Typically, our ask, part of our conversations with anyone that brings this topic up is, what is the longevity, what is the lifespan, what is the intention? Because if it's a one-time goal, typically we're still...
It's a lot to administer.
It's a lot, yeah, absolutely. We could figure out other options for, yeah.
Where we fix up the donation, where to use the district, we could accept the donation to another scholarship, there's other issues that are in place. This was a specific ask of very passionate.
Mm-hmm, yeah, sure.
But we had a pretty, we had a good number of individuals, but like I said, the investment currently is incremental. But since there is a lot of interest in the community to contribute to it.
Is there a... All those, so all those contributions from the community, that's going to have to come to the board then for approval to go into the scholarship? Am I understanding that right?
Yes, as these items come in, we would ask for your acceptance of those donations. It's an action item by policy unless you give us acceptance to do otherwise.
Okay, so like...
If it's five bucks, we'll put in consent. We can, you know, if it starts to become a, a regular component of that, but yes.
I, I can kind of envision where maybe they do a golf charity tournament or something like that, and they pull funds and, and put it all in, at least so it's not, we're not getting hit with a twenty-five dollar donation here, twenty-five there.
Yeah, our intention is not to bring a five-dollar donation for different activities. And if it's an event that's not paid for, that that's just a collection, that's not really in our mind a donation, it's just a participation.
Right.
So like if you pay for a golf tournament, unless that golf tournament is set up to say, this is your donation tax.
And that, yes, yeah. Okay.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Thanks.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, that moves us into the Board of Education report, and we'll start with the MSBA delegate report and conference update. Do you want to, do you want to start, Keith?
You know, interestingly, Lindsay was our delegate this time.
I what?
I shot.
Keith had to be a timer at the delegate assembly, so I got to vote on our behalf and experience being the delegate, so.
Yeah, so everybody can make speeches, but there's a time limit, so they appoint somebody to be a timekeeper to ring a bell when they run out of time, and how many speeches were there? There were somewhere around two or three thousand speeches.
It felt like it, but no, there were twenty, twenty.
And I never got to ring the bell even once, but in advance of that, I was thinking, you know, we need a delegate. Lindsay probably would love to do this, and I said, wouldn't you like to be the delegate? And halfway through that, I think she was mad at me for all of this. But anyway, it was all a bunch of wordsmithing about those advocacy positions, and it was, it was a little bit silly, but it got done. So that, that happened, there were two things in my presentation I went to, I was going to talk to you about, unless you guys want to talk about something first. One, which I told Lindsay and Brian about was, I guess, one of them was Neosho School District did a presentation, they, they have come up with this program, I think they've run it two years, where they invite people, members of the community to come in and take this class to learn about what a school district does, and I think it's like eight sessions and over, I don't know if it's... Probably a week, maybe it's monthly, or maybe it's every other week or something like that. And so, and Jonathan Russell, who's, he's also a member of the board of directors, and he's, I've gotten to know, he said it was his idea, well, why don't we just go ahead and try and teach people things? And what their purposes were was, it, it is community engagement to some degree. It's a way of, you know, getting information out into the community and also a way to have people educated about what really honest to God is going on so that maybe to counteract the rumor mills and social media to some, to some degree. And I was just really fascinated by it. I thought it was an interesting, and ultimately, a board member recruitment, you know, because you're, you're teaching people what's, what's going on. Now, they, and just before I meet, Brian asked, I'm going to ask Jonathan for their, some materials, and if it's okay with you, I'll ask him to have their superintendent talk to you directly about it because the presentation was by, mostly by the superintendent who had coordinated this. And, you know, and he did say he's now seen at least once in social media, you know, the rumor mill running around, and somebody who went through the training said, well, you know, there might be more to this story than that because, you know, people, so they would take them, you know, to, now they have more buildings than we do. It's a bigger district, and go to this district, show them how the bus system works, show, you know, just every little thing, and it sounded, I was fascinated with it. So, I don't know, we might be, I don't know if we could do something like that or not. The other thing that, and I think Carrie, you've asked about this in the past, the Washington School District get a presentation on their student representative on the school board that they have. And, and the presentation was by one of the board members and then the student rep that, this year. And I've heard about that, that kind of concept for years. I've always frankly been a little bit skeptical as to, you know, they can't, you know, they can't, what are, what are they really there for and what's their deal? Now, the kid was, the kid, the young man who was the representative, he was kind of a dynamic, outgoing guy, and he was bragging about, I shouldn't say bragging about, but for him, it was a resume thing. You know, he could take his college applications, had he done this, but, but they also, they explained how they go about doing it. And what they do is juniors are invited to apply to, the juniors in high school. And I guess if you get through the screening process, they're put up to be elected by their peers. The junior class elects the representative. And then that student is the board representative from, for a calendar year. In other words, from January to December, you know, the middle of the junior year to the middle of the senior year. And the idea being that the last half of the senior year, the student's probably got other focuses and so forth. And so that's how they do it. And so, and so the student comes to all the meetings, you know, if it was this meeting, he'd be sitting up here somewhere, and he doesn't actively participate, it sounds like, unless he's asked about something, but he does, does a report, and he's taken upon himself to go around and talk to different, the different buildings, and you know, and he's, he's really... So I don't know, it, I was fascinated by it. It seemed like something that could actually, actually work. I don't know if we ever had any interest in doing something like that. I guess we could quiz the Washington District about some of the details. But it kind of made sense to me. That's something that could actually be helpful because things can come up, you know, where, well, what is, you know, what is going on at the high school? What is your, anyway, those two things were interesting to me and food for thought.
I went to several great presentations. I focused a lot on community engagement speakers, and then the Springfield School District has done a great job of trying to figure out how to get just community feedback through their websites and then their surveys and making sure that there's a feedback channel. So if somebody has a question, it does get answered in a timely fashion. They're a huge district, so they have several people in their communications department. But it was just a good, good avenue on how to just always constantly be asking for feedback. And they're, they get positive comments as well, so when they just open up that channel of communication, they're learning a lot from that community. I went to a great presentation by Afton on equity and gifted education that was fantastic, and she works very closely with Mary Hartnett, they're colleagues, and so it's exciting to hear about what they're doing and that Brentwood has had some collaboration with that program as well. I went to Brawla. The school district does an incredible onboarding process for new board members. It's very well organized. I feel like in the past few years, we've been trying to create some good procedures as board members and to make sure that as we roll off the board, there's a process that's already in place. And so I brought home their little packet, and what they do for new board members, they meet like six different times before board meetings to introduce new board members to the admin staff, the central office staff, the maintenance staff, and just to give a really good overview of the district and how it works. Because a lot of times when we join the board, we don't, we don't, we don't know really what our roles are and the way the district functions, and so they, their onboarding process happens in like three to six months, and then you have a very well-educated board member on the function of the district. So some great things I think that we can start doing here. And also another presentation on onboarding new staff, which kind of, you know, goes back to what we heard already tonight, how to support the whole person and making sure that they're provided with the information about the district, but also feeling like they're part of the district and understanding the nuances of a building. It could be a little bit different in different buildings, and just looking at a new staff person, their whole, as a whole person, and whether they need to be successful and retain them in the district for long term. So it was a great, it was a great conference. I walk away hearing things that we're doing, which is very encouraging, but also learning some, some fun things that we can bring back here, so it's always good.
Yeah, I just, it was a great conference. A lot of wonderful presentations. I, I went to several legal, legal updates. Wasn't the most exciting, but that's one I needed to go to. And I kind of focused on, there were several sessions around, you know, staffing, recruiting, and retaining with a real focus on, which makes me, made me feel good because under Dr. Chambers' leadership, we focused a lot on retention. Obviously, recruiting is important, but, you know, you heard a lot of people in these presentations speaking to the fact that, you know, obvious, seems obvious, should be common sense, but if you keep good people, you're not always churning and, and all that money that's lost on, you know, the lost training and coaching and so forth. So, you know, that was just kind of more, you know, got a couple of good little tidbits out of that, but also just reaffirming that that's really been a focus on how to make people feel welcome and belonging to our, to our district, so it was good.
All right, MSBA refresher training. Kate, do we need to do, are we all behind on a refresher training?
Well, Ryan and Keith are caught up because he didn't know he has a new board member, so that makes... Yeah, he happens to know March twenty-three, he'll play the assignments, but...
Great, thank you. And board committee updates, I just wanted to put out there again. We, you know, we have our three board committees, advisory committees, and we've put out an application to our community and our parents and to recruit, I think we're talking about two community members to join each of our advisory committees, the curriculum committee, communications, and finance and facilities. And as board members, we've been going to all of the November PTO meetings just to introduce ourselves, talk about what the board does, and encourage applications to our advisory committees. So we have two more PTO meetings to go to. Ryan and I will be at the middle school tomorrow.
Or McGrath?
McGrath.
McGrath. We will be at McGrath tomorrow. I was, Jamie was at middle school last week. Yes, we'll be at McGrath. So any committee updates?
Finance, facilities, and communication are meeting this week just to talk through with the upcoming completion of McGrath and then Mark Twain messaging and making sure we are doing all we can to engage stakeholders with what's happening.
Anything in curriculum?
Curriculum, I think there's anything new since the last meeting.
All right. And then, let's see, upcoming events, school board candidate filing opens beginning of November, or December, December sixth, closing on the twenty-seventh. Policy meeting, December sixth, a winter holiday open house, which is always nice, December fourteenth.
Is that here? Where is it?
Yes.
Yeah, so board members and staff and business meeting. Right, anything else for open session?
I move that we adjourn and move into closed session for the reasons stated in the agenda. A second?
Okay, we could do a roll call, Kate?
Jamie Allen?
Yes.
Ryan Flynn?
Yes.
Chris Perkins? Keith Raigord?
Yes.
Keith Switzer? Lindsay Spencer?
Yes.
Gary Drossel?
Yes. Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for coming and your updates.
Thank you. Thank you all.